Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Weld County School District 6 on this, the ninth day of September 2019. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance Star Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Green, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayley?
Present.
Mr. Lydiak? Mrs. Mash? Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Ms. Pappas?
Present.
Dr. Richard?
Present.
Solis?
Present.
Six, five members present.
Thank you, Ms. Green. We say often that we are here to engage, empower, and inspire, and one of the, one of the best ways we're engaging kids and empowering kids is through our AP programs. And we were recognized recently as having 120 AP scholars. That is, that is twice as many AP scholars as we had just five years ago in 2000, or six years ago, rather, in 2013. And so, we're extremely proud of those students. We're extremely proud of, of those teachers that, that work with those students. We are behind every student, a great student and achieving student is, is a great teacher that's inspiring them. And so, congratulations not just to those 120 students, but to their teachers. I want to recognize just a few of those because four were National AP Scholars. And so, congratulations to Hayden Hind at Greeley Central, James Cromholz at Greeley Central, Indigo Parlin at Greeley Central, and Brooklyn Johnson who graduated from, from Northridge. Those kids achieved, took, I think to be a National AP Scholar, you have to take at least eight. Is that right?
Yep.
Eight, have passed eight AP exams. And so, that means those kids have gotten, you know, at least right around 24. Some of them as much as 36 hours of college credit already. So, congrats to those students in particular. Also, I wanted just to bring up another way that we are engaging and empowering kids. And our Jefferson High School was recognized again recently by Habitat for Humanity for the great work that they do for Habitat. They are building their last, they've been working on an entire neighborhood in their construction management pathway. And they are beginning the last house on that neighborhood. They'll continue that program, but these, these students do incredible things. And if you haven't gotten to see our Jefferson students in action, just call somebody from Habitat. They will be glad to loan you a hammer. Next item of business is to hear people desiring to speak before the Board of Education. And tonight, we have Mr. Steve Teetz. Mr. Teetz, if you would, make your way to the microphone and you will have two minutes to speak.
Good evening, Chairman and the Board. My name is Steve Teetz of Greeley. Two things, I'm going to try as quick as possible. Number one is the transit transportation. We're still having safety problems besides the, you know, the voices are high. They also, like say, for example, bus driver tells them go back, and, and this morning I saw that, to go back so more people can get on. And they didn't do it. And then, this evening on my way here, there was a gentleman, another passenger told this student to sit down. He wouldn't do it, so I said something too, and he wouldn't do it. People need to sit down, and, and we do overcrowd the buses, and I understand that. But we need something. And I do want to apologize that I didn't get ahold of the one in transportation. I said I was going to when I got back, but I got sidetracked. But I talked to him before the meeting here, and we're going to get together. The second thing is the bond issue. I have talked to people, not just people with disabilities or seniors, but I'm thinking of parents too, that they own a home and their taxes, even though Weld County has one of the lowest taxes in Colorado. But they still will have a hard time. And I was just thinking if there's another way we can get the money to, for books or whatever, or more drivers on school buses, that, that it wouldn't be so hard on other people with the taxes. I mean, we pay enough taxes and things are high as it is. So, I was just wondering, because the, the bond issue can be, if it passes, could be a struggle for others. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teetz. Next item of business is our work session report. Ms. Green, will you give us and our public update on what we've been doing for the last couple hours?
Board of Education President Michael Matthews began the work session with comments and updates from board members, and then proceeded to review the calendar of upcoming events and meeting dates. The board discussed community engagement and the revision of Innovation 2020. That concluded the work session.
Thank you, Ms. Green. We're now to our superintendent's report. And so, Dr. Pilch, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. I want to start with some celebrations. Actually, I want to start and end with celebrations. I too want to echo your congratulations to the AP Scholars. We have made significant strides in our offerings of AP courses at all three of our high schools. It's very exciting, very exciting for those students and for those schools. And you're absolutely right, behind every one of those AP Scholars are some amazing teachers, and some of those teachers are in the room tonight. So, congratulations to all of you. I want to recognize, we have a finalist for Colorado Teacher of the Year among our teaching staff. Machin Norris, who is an Integrated Science and STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math teacher at Franklin Middle School, is one of seven teachers statewide who have been selected as a finalist. So, we're-
She's at Northridge now.
Oh, she's no longer at Franklin. So, she moved to Northridge. Well, I wondered when it said she was integrated, but the announcement does say Franklin, so she must have applied while she was still at Franklin. All right, thank you for that. So, Ms. Norris, who was at Franklin Middle School and now is at Northridge High School, regardless, is a finalist for the Colorado Teacher of the Year. Thank you, Ms. Myers, for, for that clarification. I also want to share with you all, we had, we had a, a great week last week, and I respect Mr. Teetz's comments about the bond issue. I, I do want to remind folks that the bond issue is bricks and mortar and building, it's new buildings, it's replacing some buildings. It, it is not salaries and bus drivers and textbooks. That's Mill Levee Overby Dollars, textbooks and bus drivers. This is, this is building some buildings and making some significant repairs to buildings. And most importantly, to address a few big things in our community. One, which is the 5,000 students we are over capacity in our school district, but also to ensure that we have the, the correct spaces in place for students to be college and career ready, and, and to be ready to go into the workforce right here in our community, and to invest in the economic development here. So, as a part of that, a few of us went out to meet with the Evans Chamber Board last week, and we were excited to learn the next day that after sharing information with them about the bond issue that's on the ballot in November, that they endorsed ballot measure 4C. So, that's pretty exciting, and I think a, a big testament to how important this sort of thing is to the business community, that it's truly an investment in workforce. And then, I want to share with you, finally, that we have implemented our first two creative learning stations. And this was made possible with our partnership with the Success Foundation. So, the Success Foundation is, has been fundraising to put a creative learning station, a smart lab, in our schools. So, our promise to them is for every smart lab they fundraise for, and it's about $200,000, we will dedicate Mill Levee Overby Dollars and do another school in the district. So, they, they, they did their fundraising, and we have opened our first smart labs for K-8 Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math at McAuliffe K-8 Middle School and at Billy Martinez Elementary School. So, there, I mean, we'll get you all out there so you can see those smart labs and see what that is all about. But it's very exciting. Will absolutely make a difference in, in preparing our students for life after school. This is about coming together and building things and creating things and analyzing and synthesizing and collaborating to, to get projects completed. So, it's been a good week in District 6. We're, we're coming in right around 22,500-ish students here in the district. So, it's a good number. We're a growing school district, which is a, a good problem to have. So, thank you very much, President Matthews.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Next item of business is to approve an agenda for tonight, and this is an action item, so I'd be glad to accept a motion from someone.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Thank you, vote both. Is there any discussion on the item or the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Green, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Green. The next item of business is our consent agenda. Just to remind everyone that this, these are items that we've all agreed don't need any discussion from us, and we've consented to. But it's also an action item, and so, we'll need a, a motion to move forward.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a roll call vote, Ms. Green.
Mr. Hayley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Next item of business are recognizing those Betcher Teachers that you mentioned, Dr. Pilch. And so, I'm going to turn this portion of the meeting over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. So, those of us, like Dr. Hannahford, who's making her way to the podium, and I, who have been high school principals in Colorado, we are well aware that there is very little award that is as prestigious as being a Betcher Scholar in a high school. You know, I know as a high school principal, the amount of work that goes into preparing students to be Betcher Scholar applicants. They, they go through extensive interviews and, and extensive application process. And behind every one of those students are, again, those remarkable teachers who are guiding them and leading them and propping them up, and oftentimes, the same folks who are helping them prepare to actually be selected as a Betcher Scholar here in Colorado. And so, I, you know, I'm truly honored that tonight, you know, we are going to recognize those adults, those teachers, who, who are there and come alongside those students, and the students have selected them to be recognized as the students were chosen for the Betcher Scholar. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hannahford, our Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Instruction.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I want to first just give a little background about, about the Betcher Foundation. Since 1952, the Betcher Foundation has awarded approximately $100 million in undergraduate scholarships to many of Colorado's best and brightest students. That translates to more than 2,600 current and alumni Betcher Scholars. Annually, more than 1,500 students apply for only 42 available Betcher Scholarships. And last year, District 6 had two student scholars receive the Betcher Scholarship, which is a merit-based scholarship for Colorado high school graduates that provides a full ride to any four-year institution in the state of Colorado. The Betcher Scholars are given the opportunity to select one staff member who significantly, significantly impacted their learning. And it is my pleasure to be able to recognize both of those teachers. Our first Betcher teacher is Mr. Thomas Frazier. Since 2013, Mr. Frazier has taught English Language Arts in District 6 at Greeley Central High School. His Betcher Scholar is Taylor Henderson, who is attending CU Boulder and is pursuing a major in English and Creative Writing. Clearly, Mr. Frazier made a significant impact on her while she was in high school that led to her choice of post-secondary plans. And I also would like to thank Mr. Kerry Smith, who is the principal at Greeley Central, for supporting his teachers and all of his students. And they are both here tonight. We're going to have them come up in just a minute to recognize both of them together, alongside our second Betcher teacher, who is Ms. Jackie Schmidt. Since 2009, Ms. Schmidt has taught science at Frontier Academy. Her Betcher Scholar is Samuel Stoltz, who is studying biomedical science at Colorado State University. Ms. Schmidt made a significant impact on Samuel also, who is also pursuing a science career pathway, just like she did. So, I would like to invite all of them to come forward now. Mr. Frazier, Ms. Schmidt, Mr. Smith. And I would like our Board President, please, Mr. Matthews, to join us. As they're coming forward, I just want to say that without a doubt, our District 6 teachers are talented and committed, and it is because of them that we are better and stronger. Round of applause for our amazing teachers. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Next items of business are to revise and update some policies. And so, the first revision that we have is a revision to education-agency relations. And this is an action item, so we will need a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 revises the education-agency relations policy and regulation as presented.
Second.
Thank you, all three. Dr. Pilch, I will let you inform us or give us a little bit more about this policy and what we're doing.
Thank you, President Matthews. So, these are important policies as, as they're an important piece of governance that we do as we support and oversee the application process and the initiation of new district charter schools. So, these are the policies and regulations around, around that work and around the approval of, of new charter applications. So, as you all know, we do not directly supervise the charter school. We don't, we don't supervise their staff, but we do, we do authorize their charter. And we would be the folks who are, are the overseers should there be policy violations or regulatory issues that are not being addressed, that their board, their own board is not able to address without our interference.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Is there any discussion from board members? Seeing none, Ms. Green, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Next item of business is the revision to our policy on safeguarding personal identifying information. This also is an action item, and we'll need a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 adopts the EHC Safeguarding Personal Identifying Information Policy as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. And Dr. Pilch, will you give us a little bit more information about what we're doing with this policy?
Yes, thank you, President Matthews. As, as you all know, and this is a second read tonight for the adoption of a new policy, this policy is being proposed as a part of new state legislation that passed in the previous legislative session. And I am recommending your approval on this policy as, as it outlines our obligations around safeguarding personal identifying information of students, and also how we work with our vendors to ensure that they are also safeguarding information regarding our students and families.
Is there any discussion from board members on this particular policy? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a roll call vote, Ms. Green.
Mr. Hayley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Our final policy revision tonight is the revision to policy EDB, Maintenance and Control Materials and Equipment, and we will need a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 repeals policy EDB, Maintenance and Control of Materials and Equipment as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. And Dr. Pilch, will you give us just a little bit of information about what we're doing in this one?
Yes, thank you, President Matthews. So, this is a repeal, which means we're actually removing a board policy. So, we add one tonight, and we're taking one away tonight. The practices behind this policy are codified in our finance manuals and are not any longer necessary to be in board policy. So, I recommend that you repeal the policy.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from board members on this particular item? We'll remind the public, it is, it's a second read, so we have had plenty of time to look at this and the revisions that Dr. Pilch has suggested. But seeing none, we'll proceed to a roll call vote, Ms. Green.
Mr. Hayley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Our final item of business tonight is an update for Innovation 2020 around our climate and culture and cultural proficiency. And Dr. Pilch, I will, I will turn this portion of the meeting over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. I'm pleased to invite and introduce at the podium tonight Dr. Stacy Dattery, Assistant Superintendent of Academic Achievement, and Mr. Jesse Tiarina, our Director of Cultural Excellence and Family Engagement. I will just remind you that tonight's update from Innovation 2020 is on climate and culture, priority number one. What you will see tonight in this presentation looks a little different when you get to the end than other presentations we've had on our Innovation 2020 updates. We are actually going a step further in these updates to make some recommendations to you on what we would hope to see in a revised version of Innovation 2020, because 2020 is just a few months away now. So, Dr. Dattery and Mr. Tiarina will close with that, and certainly know that those are still open for consideration and further revision too, as necessary. But I'm excited to invite the two of them here tonight. This has been really, really big work that I have been privileged to be a part of since coming to the school district four years ago. And I couldn't be happier with the leadership that Mr. Tiarina has, has been providing in this area. As you all know, when I came to the district office, we eliminated 17 district-level positions, and we did some restructuring. And I just want to remind you, one of those new positions was this position of Director of Cultural Excellence. And, and so, my point in sharing that with you is that because of the strategic guidance that the board had given me coming in around the important work around culture and climate in our school district, that empowered me to, to do some restructuring. And what you see tonight is truly the results of that work. So, kudos to you all, and kudos to the staff for the work they're doing. So, with that, I'll turn it over to, to the team. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch, President Matthews, and members of the board. I am pleased tonight as well to share with you alongside Jesse Tiarina, an update on climate and culture, priority one of our strategic plan. Our strategic plan, Innovation 2020, sets our mission and our vision for our district. Our mission states clearly that we provide every student with a personalized and well-rounded and excellent education in a safe, caring environment. We do this through our vision of educating today's students in partnership with families and communities to succeed in tomorrow's world. And as we review our value statements in relation to our update tonight, the value that most tightly aligns to this priority and goal area is the one bolded on your slide deck. We view diversity as an asset. This is a value statement that is critical to the work of climate and culture in our strategic plan. And while all four of these goal areas are a part of our strategic plan and are all important to the work that we do in District 6, the goal, the goal, rather, of climate and culture is our focus this evening. This goal states that we will cultivate a safe and supportive learning environment for all, embracing our diversity, honoring and engaging all stakeholders, and promoting safety. Within that goal, there are two priorities, and tonight, we will focus on priority one with you, and that is to ensure cultural proficiency throughout the system. While equity is a familiar word among many school districts, District 6 has made it a priority within our Innovation 2020, and with the priorities that Dr. Pilch shared with you as we started this evening. So, within that priority area, there are three outcome measures that we set out to achieve through the implementation of the action steps. And these outcomes include working toward the training of all certified and classified staff, as well as to implement school equity teams at every school, and a support services equity team. There are also three objectives in priority one, and they are included on this slide. The three main ideas of these objectives include cultivating a strong sense of belonging, creating a continuum of services for students throughout, through that equity lens, and to provide high-quality professional development for staff in the area of cultural proficiency. So, I want to share with you a bit of our data in relation to the outcomes that we have, that I've just shared with you. So, in relation to our first outcome measure, you can see from this graph that 79% of our staff have had culturally responsive training. Understanding that practices related to equity are not acquired over two-hour sessions that we might provide, the district equity team leverages a multitude of different training opportunities such as summer institutes, full-day professional development days in schools, school and departmental staff meetings, assistant principal and principal meetings, and our district leadership team meetings to build that capacity across the system at various levels. Beyond diversity is a two-day intensive training that was first introduced to school and district educators and leaders in the summer of 2017. It is provided for leaders and teachers, teachers' tools to help guide courageous conversations regarding equity. And as a strategy to distribute leadership and create problem-solving culture, stakeholders from across the system have participated in this training. And I am pleased to report to you tonight that the 90% goal on this slide has been reached of our new teachers having been trained on cultural proficiency at an awareness level. Primarily, this training occurs in August each year through the educator training, the new educator training that is held in, in August. This outcome measure has also been achieved, and we have equity school, we have a school equity team, rather, identified at every school. These equity teams are taking a deeper look at how educational equity is addressed in their schools to ensure access to a quality education for every student. And while this momentum of school equity teams differs across the system, genuine successes have taken place as these teams were implemented, really, for the first time last school year, and now continue as we begin this new academic school year. And finally, this data in relation to our third outcome point, outcome measure, this outcome measure is fully in progress this academic school year with three identified members of our district equity team leading the development and implementation of the support services equity team. Now going to turn it over to Jesse, as he's going to share the 2019, 2020 action steps that are being implemented this year as a part of year three of our five-year cultural proficiency plan. So, Jesse?
Thank you, everybody. Everybody have a nice day? Yeah? Great Monday, great way to start the Monday. Feel blessed. So, thank you again, thank you, Dr. Dattery. Last year, we formalized a development of five-year cultural proficiency plan that is designed to provide key actions and training opportunities that strengthen the district's efforts in implementing equitable practices across the system. The plan is categorized into five different program areas that reflect the five different aspects within the expected work. They include the district leadership team, new administrators and assistant principals, school equity teams, instructional supports, and support services. school equity teams, instructional supports and support services. This plan is to provide guidance and direction so that building and department equity teams can create their personalized equity plans that best meets their building and or department needs in the area of cultural proficiency. Now, in the element or in the area of professional development, moving into year three of the cultural proficiency plan, it's going to be very essential to have a range of opportunities for all of our different stakeholders, just as if you were a teacher and having a various, you know, differentiation for all your particular learners. It's not much different. So, in October recently, we revealed the cultural proficiency online, cultural proficiency, oh, excuse me, that was a slide ahead. So, for professional learning and varied educational across the system, in October we launched, this October, we're going to be launching the cultural proficiency online course in which staff will become familiar with language and general concepts around cultural proficiency. In addition, we will continue to build capacity around culturally relevant pedagogy and courageous conversation via avid and beyond diversity in the summer of 2020. Furthermore, exposure and onboarding of new educators will continue to exist annually as an integral session in the new educator training. In the area of district leadership team, practice has to provide purposeful training, coaching, support, and opportunities for celebration and reflection in relation to cultural proficiency across the system. The district equity team will create and facilitate quarterly creating a space for culture sessions during district leadership team meetings. Most recently, we presented the cultural proficiency plan, bringing together past, current, and future action steps. Forthcoming district leadership team meetings will include a revisitation of the four agreements and the six conditions that are associated with courageous conversation, along with opportunities to engage in in-depth conversations associated with equitable practices. To close out the year, district leaders will be encouraged to celebrate and reflect on their collective efforts and successes of equity work across the system. I want to add on to a little bit around the beyond diversity. I'm so excited and happy that we are entering year three of beyond diversity because already since then, UNC has taken it on just recently, and there's other school districts that are really getting engaged in this work. Most recently, the New York Public Schools, their new Garanza, their new superintendent has incorporated courageous conversations across the system. So, that just affirms and tells us that we're doing the right work when it comes to really addressing some heavy issues within our system. So, I just wanted to add that. In the area of new administrators and assistant principals, again, it's really essential to onboard new administrators at any capacity. Intentional support is going to look at the new schools and district administrators so they can be grounded in the concepts associated with cultural proficiency work. Action steps include creating a space for culture activities, familiarization with the cultural proficiency continuum, increased awareness on the impact of bias and microaggressions on student membership, and further understanding of the role cultural relevant pedagogy plays within instructional delivery. In the area of school equity teams, that's how we consider to build more capacity across the system. School equity teams become an essential resource for the students and families we serve. In order to create momentum and ensure effectiveness of school equity teams, the district equity team will provide targeted and consistent support to school equity team leaders and members in the areas of relevant professional development, equitable practices, inequitable policies, cultural competence, and data analysis through an equity lens. This is our direct line of support in order to build capacity throughout the system and ensure exposure to equitable practices because of the work that we have done at district leadership team over the past two years. We are poised to distribute this leadership with great authenticity across the system, so really confident about the work we've done the recent two years with the district leadership team. In the area of instructional supports, leveraging data remains to be essential in forming decisions on instruction. Whether in content or in delivery, the district equity team understands that equity must be continuous and embedded in how we analyze data and how we review curriculum, review assessment, and review instructional policies and practice. To assist in ensuring these supports exist, the district equity team, along with school equity teams, will provide professional development tailored in support of equitable practices and what it looks like to create and enrich learning environments that foster and build the gifts and assets of all of our students. In the area of support services, as mentioned before, the support services equity team is in progress of being developed. As we begin to extend and strengthen the work of equity across the system, the PD and the opportunities for learning and support services will become more intentional. To expand on the current momentum, the district equity team will facilitate and coordinate relevant training, administer a cultural competence self-assessment, and provide direct coaching and support of the online cultural proficiency course and any new learning related to cultural proficiency language and concepts associated with equity. As a part of the, this is the area recommended for revised strategic plan, as a part of the revised strategic planning process later this year, the district equity team leaders and members will review, revise, and adjust practices and policies that support equity across the system. Other additional action steps consist of working with HR and training hiring teams on cultural proficiency hiring practices and continue to review and evaluation of school and department equity teams to ensure representation of student membership, student and family needs, and most importantly, student and family voice. We cannot be culturally proficient if we do not know the cultures of our community. Staying authentically engaged with our children, youth, and families of our community will ensure that we have the best interests of our students in mind. Thank you all for your time as we've shared and updated our Climate and Culture proficiency Priority One.
Thank you, Mr. Tiarina. Thank you, Dr. Dattery. I think we'll have some questions from board members, so we'll start with Ms. Solis.
So, first of all, I want to thank the board for really working together to push this work. It really started with the school board, and thank you, Dr. Pilch, for making this a priority and putting in place people like Jesse and working with Stacy to really, really dig in and figure out what we need to do as a district. I can't even express how important this work is to make sure that our kids feel like they're welcomed in our schools and that their families are welcomed in our schools, and you guys are a shining star. I hope that other community organizations that are around us in Greeley Evans and Northern Colorado really pay attention to the work we're doing and implement their own programs in their own different organizations, because our community is so diverse, and it changes all the time. And the more we can stay on top of that and making sure that families really feel like they are part of this community, the better it is for all of us as community members. So, just thank you for doing all that work, and thank you to district employees for being open to this work. Sometimes these conversations are sensitive and hard to have, and it takes courage to sit down and actually have these conversations. So, I applaud everyone in District Six for putting that effort in and really having these tough conversations and doing the hard work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think Ms. Pappas is next.
I also appreciate the work and agree with everything that Rhonda mentioned tonight. I appreciate both of you and your entire team. I do have a question about the equity teams at the school. So, if I am a teacher at a school, how do I become part of the equity team? Is my first question.
Dr. Pilch, do you want to?
No, go right ahead. No, go ahead.
So, it's going to be dependent from school to school. There's going to be, I mean, there's essentially a criteria that we asked it to be from six to eight members, you know, big, but I mean, regardless, it could be as big as you really want it to be. For me, the whole criteria was based on the fact that it was reflective of our student membership and the needs, whether it's around race, whether it's an identity, sexual orientation. We ask that, and we encourage that, it would be an administrator that has the power to inform decisions around policy or practice, because that's going to be essential when you're looking at addressing things that might be there because they are put on paper and they need some kind of resolution. But ultimately, from building to building, principals ultimately asked and shared a number of committees that members of the school can be involved in. And I have seen that those who love to do the equity work tend to go straight for that, but I've also seen those who are very interested that may not be familiar with what equity teamwork looks like, that have advocated for themselves or have come through me to advocate for them and make that conversation take place within that system. They tend to be at different areas right now from school to school. They're strengthening as we go along the way. Our whole goal is to continue to support them purposefully and intentionally throughout this year, but they've been quite organic in that sense because it's through the process of revealing the needs of our students that we've identified the necessary members that should be included with this equity committee. So, I see it to be an ever-evolving type of committee that as you begin to reveal different focus that you might need to address within your school, it's going to be dependent that we have, and essential to have proper representation of those needs according to the committee. So, at any point in time, there could be like a student involved or a parent involved also.
Well, I appreciate that. And then, a follow-up question, which you may not be able to answer right now because you're kind of in the beginning stages of implementation. So, if I am selected or I am on your, the equity team at a school, then what's the expectation for me? What exactly am I expected to participate in or?
So, there's, there are different things that are within the actual equity plan that will support our equity team leaders of what it looks like to move forward. So, there'll be protocols around identifying a focus that needs to be addressed, whether it's based on quantitative data around a gap that may exist among student membership or students to students. It could be around qualitative data that might exist around the perception of certain subgroups that may exist, and there are protocols. There's actually a protocol that I'm working on that's called SETUP, School Equity Team Understanding Protocol, of how to begin identifying these focuses and the right questions to ask to bring into life certain things that need to be addressed within the conversation. And I'll support them through that, but like, one of the things that I continue to not push back at, but try to express is the fact is that this is complex work, and it's been great to have the support from the board as well as Dr. Pilch in the sense that she's understanding of that, that these aren't necessarily practices that you can Google and find, but these are essentially next practices that you begin to formulate and develop as you begin to identify the needs. So, that is unique work in the sense that it requires the stakeholders and the members to be vulnerable in the sense they kind of get out there on their way. But we're giving them certain protocols around consultancy, the consensus protocol around conflict resolution. All of these are great types of protocols and elements that we use to really bring those conversations to life.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
But it's, you know, it's abstract, right?
Right, totally.
It really is, and I'm glad that you understand that because I think that's why we are gaining momentum, because there is an understanding that it is really complex work, that it can't be done in two hours.
Right.
And it has to be embedded and very strategic in that sense.
Right. Thank you.
Ms. Mash.
My question kind of goes along with what you were just mentioning, that it is abstract. So, I was wondering if there, if there's any type of way to measure the efficacy or the success of the cultural proficiency training?
I mean, you know, I had a great conversation with Anthony Osmus the other day, and I was working on a presentation, and he was asking me, do you ever put student data in front and show where you were three or four years ago and to where you're at now? And I'm like, wow, I'd like to know that some of our work has a direct impact on how we've improved over time. But for instance, the work we've done around students that are identified as McKinney-Bento, specifically those in accompanied youth, so students experiencing homelessness, we've done a lot of cultural proficiency work around awareness of really how to work with students identified with trauma, and if it proves right, the predicted graduation rate for an unaccompanied youth this year was eighty-two point five. And three years ago, when we began that intentional work, it was at fifty-four percent. So, to me, I would say that some of the cultural proficiency and equity work we have done for stakeholders and how to address a student that's showing up unaccompanied and the needs that they have is a direct impact of that. But even in other areas around academic discourse, conversations I've had with teachers, Tom Frazier that was here earlier, I've really worked around cultural relevant pedagogy and the education and introduction to Mexican-American Studies class that he has at Central that has got a waiting list, I would say that's a direct reflection of his cultural relevant pedagogy of why he's such an engaging teacher and so successful with all students. So, I would say that that directly aligns with that work.
Talk about the cultural proficiency continuum and the self-assessment.
And other things, right? So, we're working directly with some of our schools, Brentwood specifically, they created an equity consciousness survey. So, last year, they implemented this equity consciousness survey where they asked these questions around how a teacher shows up, and then they had a post survey also to compare them, and there was a direct reflection of how they, by increasing their own awareness, they were more cognizant of their own biases and made informed changes. It's like, you know, we have our whys educators, so this was a matter of how they kept their why in check, and it's definitely had a direct impact on their student achievement, too.
Thank you for that. And one other question is, there's onboarding training for our new teachers at the beginning of the year, and is there continuing education for the brand-new teachers as they go throughout the year?
So, I mean, that's something that we're discussing, how we put that in place. Right now, what we're doing is that we're making sure that we educate our team leaders and also our principals and assistant principals. That way, when new teachers come into place, they have some concepts in place that they could provide that professional learning also. But we just had a discussion earlier of what that might look like to continue to get in front of staff for that ten percent that weren't able to be there for one reason or another at the beginning of that new educator annual conference.
The other thing to keep in mind is that everybody will get, have the cultural proficiency online course, and then that will be something that we can continue to do for all new educators as well. So, minimum, that's kind of that minimum that all will have, and then the continued face-to-face interactions, both from central office in the way of Jesse and team, as well as at the building level.
And already, you know, from school to school, school equity teams have their members being given time during the professional development days to do some professional development training on things that are very specific to whether it's how to pronounce names and the importance of that identity, just, you know, awareness, because cultural proficiency is not only having that heavy conversation, but really knowing the data of those subgroups that seem to be, right, a part of that disproportionality that exists within our scoring.
Mr. Haley.
Excuse me. I need to compliment Dr. Pilch. She's very good about putting people in the right seats on the bus, and Mr. Tiarina and I go back a long ways. When he was an assistant principal at Central, I learned an incredible amount about him from his experiences and his family in Fort Leupton and moving on to DU and becoming highly educated. You know, one of the things I knew about him from the very beginning is that he was always willing to fight for the underserved and have the courageous conversations. And sometimes, in our society, you have to start small and move large, and now you've been given the opportunity to do this, and you've really shined and done a wonderful job, which I really appreciate how you've helped our district. You know, I have a question or almost even a concern. When we do our onboarding with some of our new teachers, they're almost overwhelmed by the amount of stuff they get. And I, you know, and so, I would hope that Mr. Tiarina and Dr. Dattery, you would consider differentiating how much those people, ask them how much they have or haven't had, so that they're not overwhelmed, and they can begin, if nothing else, by pronouncing names correctly, being aware of where people are from, understanding their religions, so just the very basics, because some of them were a little taken back by the sheer quantity, and they were a little overwhelmed. So, I understand where you've come from and done a great job, but I think we need to recognize that we're passionate about, but we can't scare our new teachers when we bring them on board.
No, that's truth spoken.
Ms. Solis.
So, when we talked about starting small and then thinking bigger down the road, the thing that really got to me was the concept that we have is making sure that kids are either college or career-ready. And when I think of career-ready and even being college-ready, is this being able to work with a diverse group. And I think of the two big things that we've really done within the district, whether it's consensus decision-making, which is a huge skill, and the other thing is around equity and really understanding how to work with different types of people from different backgrounds, especially in this community. So, I'm wondering if somewhere down the road, there couldn't be something for high schoolers around those two subjects and really getting them ready for that next tier of being out in the community and doing that work and the different types of people that they're going to be working with. I know that there's a lot of changes in leadership training around neuroleadership and more around the brain and how the brain works, but it also works with what your own inner biases are and what your experiences are and what your lenses are. And the more that we can understand and know that and experience that, the better workers we are in working in diversity. So, I hope that's something that maybe in the future, we can kind of put these skills and stuff to use and really give to our students before they go out into the workforce or even out to a college campus and maybe a community that they weren't quite prepared for, or maybe a little bit more diverse or different backgrounds than what they're used to. So, just planting the seed. Great consideration.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Solis. Any other questions from board members? I have one final one, specifically for you, Mr. Tiarina. It is big work and complex work and incredibly important work that you're doing, and you've given us a lot. What's the thing that excites you the most of what you're doing?
Well, the fact that, I guess I was just, for me, I'm just built that way. I mean, it's been really great to know that my idea of how we support students and community has not changed since I was a teacher nineteen years ago, right? It just, I'm having the ability to do it at a bigger capacity now with more skills and more support. And one of the things that I've had from you all, specifically Dr. Pilch and Dr. Dattery, is the fact that, because it's is the fact that because it's heavy conversations that I must have sometimes, I've continued to have protection around those conversations, right? Because I know with fellow peers that are in different districts that are also in the same work, their biggest fear is not having protection from their support systems. Because not everybody's going to want to hear sometimes what is being said or come from a different perspective and may get angry. We know that. That's part of that courageous conversation. So to continue and having that grace has, has given me the ability, empowered me to really move forward with this work without fear, you know? So I thank you all for that. So that's been great. That's really helped with that passion.
Thank you, Mr. Tiarina. Thank you, Dr. Daddery.
Thank you.
That is all we have for tonight. That's all the business that we have, so this meeting is adjourned.